Calling to order the Select Board meeting for Tuesday, May 27. This meeting is being broadcast by the Needham Channel for the town's YouTube channel, by the Needham Observer, will be recording via Zoom for publication and later viewing. If anybody is planning to record this session, please inform me now. Okay, so in that case, we will get started with public comment. Is there anyone in the room who would like to make, excuse me, to make public comment? Is there anyone online for public comment?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, then we're going to move along to our 2025 Pride Month proclamation. Madam Vice Chair, would you like to share that with us?
Absolutely. Town of Needham, 2025 Pride Month proclamation. Whereas the town of Needham is a welcoming community, and whereas Needham values the diversity of its residents and people everywhere, and whereas Needham respects the contribution that each and every resident makes to our town, and whereas Needham appreciates the rich tapestry of ethnic, cultural, racial, sexual, and gender identities of its residents, and whereas Needham embraces our LGBTQIA+ community, and whereas LGBTQIA+ youth are at especially high risk of experiencing discrimination, mistreatment, and violence, and the town is committed to ensuring that they are safe, valued, and supported. Now therefore, be it resolved that June 2025 be declared Pride Month in the town of Needham, and that all residents be encouraged to recognize and acknowledge the contributions of the LGBTQIA+ members of our community as we continue to advance the principles of liberty, equality, inclusivity, and justice for all. Signed to this 27th day of March 2025.
Thank you. And I'll just note that on our consent agenda today is an authorization for the placement of Pride Month lawn signs at the Town Hall and Public Services Administration Building throughout the month of June.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I moved the board vote to approve and sign the 2025 Pride Month proclamation.
Second. Any discussion or commentary? All right, well, in that case, let's take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Excellent. Okay, so the next thing on our list is a public hearing, an application for an alteration of premises, amendment to an all alcohol license for North Hill. Welcome back. Now, you guys were here not too long ago, first of all, you guys, is Brianna Tucker, manager of record for North Hill, Thomas Miller, and I'm sorry.
Bethany Mercer is the Director of Operations for North Hill as well.
So tell us what's changed and what you would like to change.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. It's nice to be here before you again, especially after the much more cozy setting as opposed to last meeting two weeks ago. The application before you tonight is to do a couple of things. The first of which is to correct a little bit of an oversight and misunderstanding. There were some areas that were originally intended to be included in the application that were not, because, you know, trying to understand a floor plans, I went to law school, not architecture school, and I misunderstood some things, and so part of that reason is we're here tonight to correct that. The other part is because we are here, we're responding to some requests by the residents of North Hill and some planning by its staff to include some areas that will allow their residents to gather and host more private functions in some more, in some of the common spaces outside of the dining areas for things like graduation parties, or birthday parties, or family gatherings in things like the library, the galleries, or one of the lounges in that main lobby area, main common space area. The other benefit of this for North Hill and its residents, it was, is that it'll allow Bethany and Brianna to serve at the larger events like quarterly cocktail parties in some of those spaces, larger parties like their anniversary, annual anniversary party, and other holiday parties like a tree lighting or Seder that are more, that move outside of the dining areas and utilize the vast facilities they have. This includes the outdoor area of the town green, which is immediately outside that third floor lobby area on, you know, immediately outside the entrance, which, you know, hosts things like their anniversary parties and things like that on a, you know, quarterly or less basis. But they have a large space that is something that allows them to utilize it in a nice and inviting area for the residents to use on different, different events and different functions and different nights. It's, you know, in general, what the application is doing is it's adding two of the dining areas and their associated outdoor space connected to those common areas on a larger area, the bistro and the cafe, and it will allow them to utilize spaces they already have to host better functioning events for the residents and their guests as they come in. I can keep talking, but I think at this point, you know, we're happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Sure. Questions?
Yeah. A couple. Will food be served in all of these areas?
Yes. It's, you know, is, the spaces are for, well, two of them are restaurant spaces, dining spaces already, but for the smaller functions and the larger functions, they either are in addition to the dining services normally offered, or sometimes replacements for the dining services outside of the dining room. So yes, food is part of those plans.
And then just the scope, I was surprised to see like bathrooms included.
So it just, it covers, it covers the areas wall to wall, you know, in the same way restaurants include their bathrooms in their licensed premise here. If you look at that, that third floor area and the area of the intermission lounge and the places downstairs that are already licensed, the bathrooms are part of that premise. So, you know, somebody is carrying their glass of wine with them, they don't walk into the bathroom, they don't have to put it down as they leave a licensed premise, they carry it with them, you know, it prevents crossing lines and things like that.
My understanding is that this is, the permission that we're granting is for where alcohol can be served, right?
And consumed. It's all, it's, it's not just the bar area, but it's anywhere where the alcohol can go.
Okay, thank you.
And so currently, they're not ever bringing in a 12-seat caterer to do any of these functions. The intent would be that it all be catered internally?
Yes. Yep.
Okay. When you were here before, we talked a lot about the beer tap wall and the drink tickets and how it was all sort of controlled. How do you control it in so many areas, particularly outside? Like, I'm not so concerned about the residents, but they're young guests wondering if you have.
So the smaller events will be covered by the staff they have in-house that are already, you know, tips trained, certified, and have been operating in the space now and will continue to operate as they move forward. Any larger event that requires more staffing that can't be handled internally, they'll contract with a larger catering company that provides staffing that is trained and understands their responsibilities that are, you know, this board expects and that they need in order to make sure that they stay within the guidelines. So they will bring in people who will, are responsible, understand, and are certified in the appropriate ways for the two or three times a year when you get to those larger events that would require the increased staffing beyond what they can provide normally from their service staff.
Okay, but they'll be scanning licenses for those who look under 40 or what have you?
They'll be checking licenses using scanners as needed and whatever appropriate technologies, the other technologies the catering company implements.
Okay, just because scanners are a required technology. Okay. All right, any other questions, thoughts?
You took my questions.
All right, well, if that's the case, then I would welcome a motion.
This is a hearing.
Oh, that's right. Thank you. This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone in the room who would like to make a comment, now's the time. And if not in the room, do we have anyone online?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, super. All right, well, given that there are no public comments, I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the application for alteration of premises to a Section 12 continuing care retirement community, all alcohol license, submitted by North Hill Needham, Inc., DBA North Hill, and if so approved, or with the application to the ABCC for review and final approval.
Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? The motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, let's see, 610, yeah, is our 40B housing proposal from Charles River Center. Madam Chair, while we're doing that, I would move the appointments and consent agenda. Excellent. Second. Any discussion? Yeah, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Hang on one second, I've got to flip through an extremely long lease to get to your, get to my notes on your, your matter. First of all, congratulations on the funding that was approved by town meeting. It's very exciting, so please, if you will, introduce yourselves and.
Sure, I'm Ian Murray-Badra, the President and CEO of the Charles River Center.
Welcome back.
And I'm Philip Karina, Project Manager with the Planning Office of Urban Affairs. We're a nonprofit affiliate of the Archdiocese and the partner with the Charles River Center.
Nice to meet you. So, Ian Murray, will you tell us again?
Sure.
I feel like we've seen you quite a few times, but tell us again.
Forgive me if I'm repeating myself. So the Charles River Center has acquired the Army land, the three and a half acres across from our corporate office, and we're partnering with a nonprofit developer to develop a integrated supportive housing, affordable housing for folks with developmental disabilities as well as for the general public. I thought it would have a presentation, but, oh, maybe I do.
Yeah, we do. And that's to the clicker, if you want to.
I can do this, but.
Carol can help you. Wait, you could always just say next slide and Carol will.
I can talk, but I can't click. Okay, so, so the mission is to provide inclusive housing and a full spectrum of services for people with developmental disabilities, including autism. And, and so when I talk about inclusive, full spectrum of services, we're talking about not only affordable housing, but all the wraparound supports and services that are needed to help folks be as independent as possible. And we are, so we're saying that to be as, it's, sorry, to be as independent as possible, they need support services in terms of not only affordable housing, but also job supports and socialization and other vocational services, skill building to be successful. And here's my team member. As we said, we partnered with a nonprofit developer. The mission of the Planning Office of Urban Affairs is very similar to ours, so we thought it would be a great partnership, and this is the team that we'd be working with, and this is Phil, we'll take him here to talk about the units.
Yeah, I'll just, just to briefly talk about the development team that we've assembled here. So, so Planning Office of Urban Affairs, nonprofit affiliate with the Archdiocese of Boston. Our footprint for where we operate is greater Boston, from Boston to Worcester up to Haverhill and down towards the Cape. And what we do is we develop mixed income housing communities, both homeownership and rental. That's, that's been our mission since the 1960s. Bill Grogan is our president, apologies he couldn't be here tonight, he had a conflict. And I, like I mentioned, I'm a project manager. And so I'll see this from conception all the way till, till lease-up. And we, the team we assembled here, the architectural team, is a nationally recognized architectural firm based out of Chelsea. They, this is, this is, they have a big affordable housing shop to do, we've worked with them on a number of different projects. VHB is our civil and traffic engineer, and they have a lot of familiarity with the North Hill development, they, I believe they were the civil engineer for that firm there. RBLA Design is our landscape architect, they're a WBE, and we work with them on, almost exclusively, they do a lot of great work, and there's a lot of opportunity here to really create some special green spaces at the site.
What's that, WBE?
It's a women's owned business enterprise.
Okay.
And then we have our, our owner's rep is our construction manager, will make sure that while we're in this conceptual phase of design, we were not doing anything too crazy that will hurt us down the road when we get actual pricing for it. And then just, just a little bit about, about us, I mentioned we were formed in 1969, we've completed over 3,000 housing units to date, and we have almost, I think, about 1,000 in various stages of the development right now, all different sizes from about, you know, eight units, that was for, for individuals fleeing domestic violence, to, I think, a 19-story high-rise in downtown Boston. So we really hit almost every type of housing, and we're really excited to be partnered with Charles River Center and, and I think, and doing our first development here in Needham.
Is that, is all of that housing in Massachusetts?
It's all in Massachusetts, correct. So.
So, so I can take it from here. So we're proposing, or we're developing 86 affordable units in fall, you'll see a design shortly. Of that, about 43 of those units will be for the Charles River clientele that we serve, and we'll be supporting them in terms of the wraparound services. So what I talked about is some of the wraparound services, such as job supports and companionship. And so in many cases, this would be the first time that these folks lived on their own, and to do that successfully really requires some, some supportive services, and that's a service that we would provide. We already do this for folks living in and around this community, so we have experience with this model. So about 43 units, it's actually 38 units, will be devoted to our clientele, and five will be devoted to staff, Charles River staff. The Charles River staff won't necessarily be working to support these people during the day in terms of these supports and services, but they're there in case of emergency on the overnights. We thought that was an important thing to have in place for folks who are living on their own for the first time. So, and then we also, in addition to the Charles River units and the staffing units, we're proposing a robust community center that will be open to the public. We think that that's important too, because our, our largest mission or one of our core values is that of community integration. So not only integrated with the folks who will be occupying the other units, not occupied by the Charles River clientele, but also integration to the general public. So we can envision things like a commercial kitchen that can be used by folks in the community. We already have people use the Charles River kitchens, such as, you know, exchange club meetings, and Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, and baby showers and so forth that are open to the public. And we're envisioning this to be a resource for the town as well. But we can provide lessons and classes to the people who live there, maybe integrate and offer it up to other people in the community. We envision a recreation center of some kind. We've talked about, what do you call, movable walls, so you can change the space according to the need, which is really important. So we're really looking to establish a creative, inclusive model with this community center and, and really take suggestions from the general community as to what they'd like to see there and what's of value as well. We can use the outdoor green space for, say, group exercises, if you will. I can envision outdoor, you know, yoga classes open to the public as well as the people who live there and have some covered space. And we've talked about horticultural raised beds that we could use as well. So that's pretty much what the community center will be. But again, we're taking feedback from the community as to what people would like to see.
Can I just interrupt? How are you, how are you receiving that feedback?
We do focus groups, we're doing neighborhood focus groups, and we've done self-abrogacy groups, we've spoken to the housing experts in DDS. Our primary funding source for our services is the Department of Developmental Services, who will fund the services that we provide. We've had a lot of focus groups and meetings with DDS and two commissioners at this point, and also, as I said, autism housing experts. Originally, we had conceived this on, you know, possibly an autism-only community, but as we progressed through it, we realized that it's not really about the disability, it's really about the need and the level of support. So the threshold, if you will, between this sort of model and that of a group home is 30 hours or less a week of staff, intermittent staff support. So that's sort of the threshold.
And then, and just to add to that, there's also a webpage that's live on CRC's website where they, where, where anyone can provide feedback on the project. I believe there's an email and a dedicated inbox, so that's, that's also available as well. Just in terms of what we're, what we're proposing here, well, it's going to be four buildings, there's a three-story building, and then three single-story buildings to kind of step up the scale a bit and create a neighborhood feel. It's a, it's a really special place up there. The first time I was up there, I was like, it just felt like I was in another world. And so it's just like, it's going to be a lovely place for, for folks to live and grow. So the three-story building is going to be 68 units, that's going to be a mix of studio apartments, one bedrooms, and two-bedroom units. That's where the amenity spaces, the community room will, will live. And then there'll be three single-story buildings, which will each be six studio apartments with community spaces. Those will, those, those buildings will be dedicated for Charles River Center clients. There will also be some units in the larger building that will be dedicated for Charles River Center clients as well. Other features are for the building, that they're all going to be designed to passive house, which passive house is a rigid energy standard for, for the building envelope, so it should, it, it should be the highest level of, of energy efficiency. We also think it's a great spot for renewable energy creation on the roof, so we'll probably, very likely, I haven't done a study yet, but very likely we'll, we'll be doing solar on the roof there. We're also looking to do connections to those various trails there, and we'll be looking to work with Babson to connect our site to some of those really nice recreational opportunities that are in the area. Parking, we have, we're proposing 61 parking spaces. It's a one-to-one for the affordable units and about .4 to one for the CRC households. Typically, the, what Charles River Center has found, that the, their clients drive a little bit less than, than, than the one-to-one, so not everyone's going to have a car, and CRC also has a, a transportation shuttle service to get folks around to their appointments, do their grocery shopping, connect them to the T, that sort of thing. And then I'll just walk through, of course, we all know where it is, but I got to put that on there to just show you where it is. And then the, the site plan for, is what I was describing here, we got building B, C, and D, that are going to be at the front of the building there to, to act as, as a community scaled buildings before you step up to the three-story building. What's great about the site is there's a lot of thick tree line there that we're going to be keeping. You shouldn't be, you shouldn't see the three-story building even during the winter, it's, it's really well-hidden from, from view if you were to look up from, from Central Ave. And there's a lot of really mature trees that will be, we're, we're not intending to take down around the site. The site's pretty clear now, and we'll be doing a tree count as we move along, but tending to keep as many trees up as, as feasible. So this is just the floor plans of the, of the, the single-story structures, there's, they're, each flat, each wing here is three studio apartments, these are, these aren't SROs, these are true apartments, so they each have a kitchen and a bathroom. There's also in the center there, a, a community, a community amenity space there, like a living room and a kitchenette for folks to, you know, get out of their room and, and hang out and maybe, maybe make a meal together, maybe we offer some, some classes in those spaces. Each one of these buildings here has a patio space there that's going to be dedicated for, for them for a little bit more, you know, individualized outdoor programming. And then the larger building has, the first floor will be the amenity spaces, there'll be a management office there. Within those spaces, two elevators will serve this building. You can see on each wing there, the, what's outlined with the red hash marks, those are CRC, those are, those are blocks are intended to be for CRC house, tent clients. And there's also, you can see there's a little living room, community room space that will, will be open to the whole building, but really where it's located is intended for those CRC, those CRC clients to use those spaces to get out of their unit. Those are studios and one-bedrooms, and as we move up to the second floor, it's very similar, except now we have units above the community room, and still we have the, the CRC one-bedrooms, and then the studio unit clusters on each wing, and it just stacks, and now we, now we have just one more stack of, of CRC units there. The CRC units are going to be, those households are going to be supported with MRVP, Massachusetts Rental voucher program, vouchers to, to, so they're able to stay in their unit and also support the project. This is a rendering, we did get some feedback on the single-story buildings, that they, that they do look like something that's coming down in town, our architect is working on updating those now. I just want to say that before, before it's flagged, we did listen, it just takes a lot of time, so we want them to do their, do their rendering update once they get all their feedback. But they are, that is in the works now, but this is just to get a feel about what, what it will look like once, once it's built. Another view down from the pedestrian level, and another view of the site here, where... Now just in terms of project timeline, you know, we hit a major milestone last week, really thankful to the town of Needham for supporting this project. And now we're, we're fast working towards getting a project eligibility letter application into the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities in June. Last week, we met with staff to get some initial thoughts and feedback, the staff being town of Needham staff, to get some initial thoughts and feedback on our site plan and some other information that, that would be helpful while we progress our plans from this concept to what's called schematic design. We have a meeting with the planning board in mid-June and the design review board to also informally introduce the project to them. We're, we're, I, we'll be, we're aiming to submit our project eligibility letter application here towards the back half of June, and then that process will take about four months. There's a comment period for the, for the town to provide comments, I'm imagining it will be very similar to some of the comments we heard last week at the staff meeting, and then whatever comments we get from a couple of the other, the boards that we'll be meeting with in the next couple of weeks. But there's, the, the lead time is that there's, has to be an appraisal process, and it can take some time for the state to procure somebody and then go out there and, and do the appraisal. So, but while that's going on, we'll, we plan on meeting with boards we haven't met with to get their feedback, because really what we, what we want to do is, once we get that project eligibility letter here in September, is to turn around and get a zoning board application in, in October, hopefully sooner than that, so we can have our, have that process started before the state opens up their pre-application in November for the one-stop process. That's where we're going to be applying for the bulk of our funds, is through that, that November pre-application. That will be all of our, our tax credits that we're applying for, all of the state's soft money is, is going to be there. That's where, that really makes up the bulk of the outstanding financial commitments for the project. So then that application, that, assuming that we're, we move past the pre-application phase, and I would, I would assume we have a pretty good shot since we have a local commitment of funds, that full application would be due likely in February of '26. They haven't released any of this information, this is just based off of the last couple of years and how that application process went. It takes about six months to hear back from EOHLC on a funding award status, and then we would anticipate that we would be able to start closing the next year in the first quarter. That would take about 18 months from, from then, and then we, we'd assume we'd be done and have a significant occupancy and have folks starting to move in. So there's still a lot to do between now and... So there's still a lot to do between now and, and then, but I think right now we're, we're, we're making pretty good progress towards, towards hitting these milestones. And that's what we got for our presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, discussion?
Sure. Thank you. That's, I, I think it was a great project. It's innovative and it's really serving a need, I think.
Thank you.
So it's great. It came up at town meeting, there was a question, I just want, it explained to me once, but the Plant, Planning Office of Urban Affairs predates much of the state's efforts to jump into housing way back when. The archdiocese was doing housing before the state. So you are sort of, you've been with it the longest, but that's what someone wanted to know, is this a faith-based, I mean, does a church control anything? Could you just explain that?
It, it, the church doesn't control anything. We're a, a separate organization. We're a nonprofit, just affiliate, but we, it is not controlled by the archdiocese of Boston at all.
Okay.
Not part of the unit infrastructure.
Okay.
Yes, I think this is very, very exciting. And I'm wondering, has the state given you any early indications on this? I don't know if they do that, but what's, what's your sense? I mean, you guys are a very unique project. So what's your sense of how the state may react?
The, the tax end of the, the state, well, well, I will say that we've met with DDS and members of EOHS and they're very excited about it. They think that this is a great opportunity. So for our clientele, it's a closed referral system and they're very excited about it. And that there's such a pent-up need for this sort of housing, especially prior to the pandemic. In our estimation, in Massachusetts, there's about 58% of folks with autism that fit into this bucket. There are those who can live independently and those who need group home living, and this is sort of the middle group that's underserved. There aren't a lot of opportunities like this in the state. So I can tell you from our funder source, they're very excited. And we have other hurdles to jump through, of course.
And I was just going to mention that Bill Grogan, our president, the president of Planning Office of Urban Affairs, met with Ed Augustus, who's the secretary of Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, and Kate Racer, who is the undersecretary. And they're both very excited about this project and, and looking forward to it coming into their, their round.
Oh, that's great.
I mean, it sounds like it'll be an amazing expansion of your programming. This is currently in the Single Residence A District. And the typical process for zoning change is to go to the planning board and get a, a change in zoning. Why did you choose the, the local initiative program?
Well, it was a, it was a, more of a timing issue than, than a, than a, and also the 40B process, that we find that it, it helps to foster a more collaborative process and approach. If we were to, just to, to back up and, and, and just, you know, talk about the Economic Development Bond Bill and that, that appropriation, I think we learned about that in, was it November? So then when we were talking with our land use attorney and we were talking about potential ways to get the project zoned, they said, well, you, if you wanted to do a zoning change, you needed to go, to do this yesterday. So we, we've done a 40, we've done, the planning office has done 40Bs in, in a bunch of different communities. And typically, we, we like to, we, we like to be really good partners with, with towns to, to really make sure that what we're building and what is something they're, they're going to want. And so we, we thought that that was the best approach for, for this project to, 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 to get it permitted in the timeframe that would allow us to take advantage of that $5 million appropriation and, and then also make sure that it's as collaborative as we can, can, can be without having to wait another year to, to rezone it.
But I, I guess I, I know you've been planning this a long time because I, I remember I received a letter from you more than two years ago outlining like the general framework for this. So I, I guess I don't understand the timing argument as much. For, for me, I just, like, we're not a planning board. We, we look at designs and it looks nice, but you know, it's not our expertise. So I, I would have just preferred to, to go through the, the normal processes.
Mary Ann?
I think your point is well-taken, Josh, in an ideal world, but I would also observe that our planning board has been incredibly taken up over the course of the last year and a half by MBTA communities. And so I think for somebody looking two years ago to say, can I add a significant zoning project on top of the work plan that they already have? I think, had I been in their shoes, this probably would have been the route that I would have hoped to go as well. I, I just think it is definitely a challenge to go through the planning board on top of the work that they already had to add something else. And I think we worked really hard, in fact, to be sure, from the town's perspective, we weren't adding anything else to that workload from our perspective, let alone whatever would come in from the outside to them during that period of time. So I just offer that as, as a consideration. I don't actually have a concern with a project of this nature coming forward as a friendly 40B. I think it, it still has a process that it will go through, all right? And I just think that it is a significant project that's in keeping with what the town has indicated to us at least, as the kind of project that they are very supportive of. And we have a longstanding relationship with Charles River over many years that I, that I appreciate. I do have just a, a couple of things. One was, I was thinking as you talked about that community center, I know at various points that Needham Community Education has talked about a desire for a kitchen for cooking classes, which might have applicability both for your folks who live there and may serve some use for them. So I just offer that as, as food for thought at some point. And I was going to ask about your development cycle, but I think I now understand, I was going to ask if you were going to use a construction manager at risk process. So Waypoint KLA is your construction partner through this now, and they are in fact already on board and working closely with your architect.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. I also wonder, did you consider at all thinking about staggered occupancy of your buildings or did, is it too complicated on the site? I, I'm just trying to think with those three buildings, does the site get too tight, particularly for this population, to consider something like that?
You know, we did consider staggered, but we thought that that would prolong the construction and, and make it very complicated and very difficult to move through the process. We did consider that. The thing about the individual units that is, one thing we've considered over time as we've evolved through this process is that could potentially be the first to go in, but having construction going on at the same time would be too confusing.
Okay.
So that's one consideration. And then also, we thought that folks who needed the most support could be in those three units and you could be a progression, if you will, into the larger building as they develop skills and confidence and, and greater independence. And we thought that would be a good thing to set up for them because the individual units are studios separate. So there's a togetherness component, there's a community component within each of those smaller buildings. And then each of them are, the housing is studios. So, you know, they sort of, those are the guys with the most need, but they can move into the bigger building, we thought. But it would be too, too much to do construction at the same time and try to do this. As much as we can set it up and have a structured program, the better for everybody, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Great. Well, I just, I just want to say that I'm very excited for this project. I think, you know, increasing housing for multiple vulnerable populations is just a benefit to the town, including those low-income residents who will receive local preference. That's very much appreciated. And of course, the fact that we can add all of these units to our subsidized housing inventory sort of makes our ability to look at friendly 40Bs even more secure because we don't have to worry about slipping beneath our threshold. So, and then the fact that this was overwhelmingly supported by town meeting, I think signals, you know, a lot of community support and for absolutely a good program. So very excited to help with this, to be a part of it.
Madam Chair, I'll just make one other comment, which is that when you, going back to that timeline, once you would get your total funding package and start to build, to the extent to which you're using the town money, there would be oversight from the town, from the Town Financed Community Housing Oversight Committee or TCHOC. But that's just in, in the future and just for people to understand that the, the town money does get oversight.
Mm-hmm. Excellent. Anyone else? Mary Ann, you look like you have something. No?
Madam Chair, I would like a motion that the board vote to support the Charles River Centers, Charles River Hates Project as a friendly 40B.
Second. All those in favor?
Oh, could I say one?
Oh, yeah. I didn't say anything before, so I thought we were done. Go ahead.
Just more for the board. There are many other towns that have policies in place for, you know, criteria, review criteria when they receive an application like this, and we don't. So I think if we want to do the, more of these in the future, we should really put those policies in place. I'm, I'm going to vote against this now because I really don't think, I'm not comfortable with, with this approach. Great project. It seems great, but I mean, I really think going through the planning board as we structure zoning now is the more appropriate way.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those against?
Nay.
Okay, the motion carries. Congratulations. Thanks for coming.
Thank you very much. Good to see you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have our municipal decarbonization roadmap. And we're joined by Gabby Queenen, our Sustainability Manager, and perhaps by Karis Lustig?
Karis is on Zoom.
What's that?
Karis is online.
Oh, online, great. Hi, Karis. Hi, Gabby. Welcome. Sure. Okay, so Gabby, you are here to talk to us about the State Climate Leader Communities Certification and the carbon, decarbonization roadmap that goes with that.
Yes.
So, take it away.
Thank you.
But first of all, ooh, congratulations on the passage of your funding, or the town's funding, but under your direction, various different programs. So I hope that will be sort of maybe something you'll talk about tonight as well, what the impact that might have.
Appreciate that. Thank you very, yeah, very grateful for the support of town meeting with that. So Climate Leader Communities, I'll just do a quick recap and then happy to dive into questions. So the Climate Leader Communities Program is kind of the new version of Green Communities. So Green Communities was established back in 2008 with the goal of helping communities become more energy efficient. And Needham became a designated Green Community back in 2020, thank you to Cecilia, who spent a great deal of time working on that designation. And as a result of that designation, Needham was then eligible for both a designation grant and competitive grants. We've received one designation grant, one competitive grant, and we have a second competitive grant currently under review right now. Now, the state has since shifted their goals from energy efficiency to now focusing on the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions. And so with that, they have developed the new program, Climate Leader Communities, so that communities can receive some extra support to pursue electrification. So this program had its first group of Climate Leader Communities just designated earlier this month in May, 19 cities and towns. And with that certification as a Climate Leader Community, again, similar to Green Communities, you are then eligible for additional grant funding. So that includes a $150,000 technical assistance grant and a $1 million accelerator grant. In order to become a Climate Leader Community, you must meet six criteria. You might remember, we talked about this back in November for the zero emission vehicle first policy. Needham has met five of the six criteria that we need in order to become eligible for application to the certification program. So the document that's before you today is the Decarbonization Roadmap. That's the last item that we need to adopt in order to be able to apply for that program. And the Decarbonization Roadmap takes a zero-over-time approach. So it looks at our fleet and it looks at our buildings as well and tries to identify opportunities for us to pursue electrification of buildings and fleet from 2025 all the way to 2050. And it really takes a focus on trigger events. So think about end-of-life or equipment, think about roof replacements, these kind of bigger events that happen and can provide opportunities for us to look at electrification or renewable energy. So the roadmap was developed by Power Options. We received a grant through the Department of Energy Resources to develop this document. And I am happy to answer any questions. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, Madam Chair. I, I guess one question that I have for you in looking at the detailed document and all the dates of, of replacements, does this, if we vote to support this, does this obligate us to do anything in this plan?
No, there's no requirements. It's really an aspirational planning document. It's, I think it's helpful in the fact that it is requiring coordination across departments. And as we think about capital planning and we think about some of the planning we're doing with schools over longer term, I think it's, it's helpful in that sense as, as a planning tool. Frankly, it's also helpful for grant applications, know that we have this in hand and that the town has these clearly established goals. But there's no requirement that if something's in the roadmap, it has to be completed at a certain year. The roadmap has to be updated every three years. So we'll constantly be going back to this and refining it. If priorities shift for us financially, one way or another, we'll, we'll make updates as needed. If projects have to get bumped up and down the list, we'll, we'll make those adjustments in the roadmap.
Yeah, that, that said, it's an incredibly impressive, like, 25-year plan. Like, oh my goodness.
It's a long list.
Yeah, it's a long list. It's really, really impressive. Who does this updating on the three-year rolling basis?
I will be responsible for the updating.
Okay, so then we're consultant.
We, we may seek additional support from, from Power Options if needed, but I am the primary staff responsible for that. And we'll continue to update the select board every time we do an, an update. So they're, everyone's kept in the loop about shifting priorities, yeah.
Great. Kevin?
Thank you. Thank you for all this work. And it is encouraging to see that we can meet the goals. I mean, it's, it is a huge list. And I think the, the way to eat an elephant is one forkful at a time, but it's weird to see the forkfuls going on to 2051. It's like, wow, so. But it is encouraging to see that we can do it. So that's like, makes me feel good. Thank you.
Mary Ann?
So, um, thank you for this, Gabby. There's clearly a ton of work to go. I like seeing the framework at least behind all the different thinking about what has to happen and when certain things can arise. I was curious, the $1 million in accelerator grant, is that a one-time thing or do you expect to see these grants change over the life of it? Or are we going to get a million and then we're never going to see any more money from the program? How are you thinking that's going to work?
It's a good question. So the grant program at this time, you're eligible to apply semi-annually in August and February. That being said, at this time, the grant program is, assuming that funding will be available through February 2027, the state has indicated it's very likely they would continue this grant program. They're putting in a great deal of resources to build this up. So I, I would be surprised if, if they didn't continue that, but at this time, it's, it's only through 2027.
Okay. And do you have any thoughts about how that could be best deployed for our town in that window?
I, I think we would look at a few different projects. I think there's really strong potential for solar on some of our existing buildings, in particular at the Cogswell Building. But I think we would have, have a conversation internally about what might be the best candidate for that.
Okay. Because I just think a million dollars doesn't go particularly far on some of these projects, particularly if you started to think about geothermal or something like that. You're like, that's going to get completely swallowed up in something. So, thank you.
Josh?
Couple of questions. So if, when we're talking electrification on buildings in particular, does that preclude a backup power source?
No, actually, generators are exempt.
Okay.
Yep.
External gener, so it... External generator, so it...
Any kind of generator, any kind of backup power supply that's used for a building, we could keep using diesel or gas. Those are considered exempt from the roadmap planning.
So if a building currently has gas, or then, does electrification mean removing that gas as well?
So the gas could continue to be used for an emergency generator. But the goal would be that for heating and cooling, we would be using electric.
And then, when we have building projects, because I guess it's not required, will we be able to see options that are all electric versus another option to see what the cost difference is?
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I would say this is, in some ways, kind of codifying processes that we already do when we do a lifecycle cost analysis for every building. We do look at electric options and try to weigh pros and cons and look not only at short-term costs but long-term costs for operation and maintenance. So absolutely, the whole suite is on the table every time we evaluate a project.
Okay. No, that's good to hear. The cost was my main question, too. Like, how is this going to impact that? It sounds like there's no necessary cost impact if we choose not to. But the intention is to go through with it. Why else would we do it? I guess just as an aside, the Specialized Energy Code, there was a memo from, I think, our school's director of finance that said the cost, because I didn't know it was this big, but the cost of implementing the Stretch Energy Code on Pollard was an increase of, from $360 per square foot to $560 per square foot. So that's a big increase. So I just want to be aware, cognizant at least, that there are cost impacts potentially.
Yeah, no, I, again, I think that every project we do, we continue to weigh each of the options, whether it's continuing with fossil fuels or electric. And there are instances where, over the long term, costs for electric work in our favor. And there might be instances where they're less favorable. But this is really just saying we're going to evaluate every option when it comes before us.
Thank you.
Gabby, can you tell us how many climate leaders there are now?
Yes, there are 19 climate leaders at this time. So the first round of grant applications, those folks will be able to apply this August. So there'll be this second class who will be able to apply once they receive their certification. And the deadline for that certification is June 30, 2025. So we need a vote for adoption by the select board. And we also need a letter from the superintendent as well.
And so I assume that while the class is smaller, it's more likely that we would be a recipient of some of this funding. And I also really appreciate that not only is there no obligation, but that most of your planning is based on end of life for these systems anyway. So it's not like we're tossing out a perfectly good system. It's something that has reached end of life or theoretically has reached end of life and would need to be replaced in any case. I do have a couple of questions. One is, can you remind us why a reduction in carbon emissions is important?
Sure. So in what we think about our climate goals as a community, reducing our greenhouse gas emissions is the most effective way that we can help to address the impacts of climate change. And in Needham, it is important to note that town emissions are about 3% of our overall town-wide emissions. But we are a contributor. So being able to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions means that the town is effectively contributing to help reduce some of those impacts from climate change.
Okay, so impacts like flooding, rain events, heat events, things like that, that impact all of our residents. Excellent. I think it's important to, you know, connect it for folks because sometimes people forget that this is a cause. But you note that the town contributes a very, you know, reasonably small amount to this carbon emissions. So do we have any plans to help residents with a personal decarbonization plan? Like, is there a resource either from the town or outside of the town that we could point people to or publicize so that that 97% could be addressed?
I will say there are several resources available on the sustainability page of the town website. If you haven't given it a read, there are just chock full of facts. In addition to resources for financing as well, which I think is really important for a lot of these decisions about people's homes. So that's a resource I would point folks to. We've also shared a few times in the News You Needem that Green Needham has an energy coach. And we're very fortunate to have an energy coach in our community. So if folks have questions about electric vehicles or solar panels, or whether it makes sense to look at a heat pump or upgrade a boiler, that's a really great resource. So I would highly encourage folks to reach out if they want to just talk to another resident and get some thoughts on what good options might be. It's a nice way to get some impartial advice without feeling pressured to buy anything.
Excellent. Very useful. And actually, I have lots of friends who have been taking it up on that, so.
He's very busy.
He's very busy, yes. Okay. So any other points anyone wants to make? If not, I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair? I move that the Select Board adopt the Needham Municipal Decarbonization Roadmap as part of Needham's application for Climate Leader Communities Certification.
Second.
More discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you. Excellent. Okay, and so now you're staying.
Yes. Yep.
And hanging. Great. And we're going to talk about the Defazio Parking Lot Stormwater Bio Retention Basin.
Yes.
Excellent. So we're joined now by Julie Wood. Nope? Sorry.
Also from Charles River.
And you're not on the list. Okay, that's why. My apologies. And I'm going to have you guys introduce each other. I don't do it poorly.
So my name is Phil Tyrotis. I work for Beta Group. We are, I lead the stormwater group in our company. And we've done many projects in Needham here. Justin and Tom.
Great.
This...
Yeah, Chris Brainerd with Beta as well. I'm a project engineer and facilitating with the design of the bio retention area.
Great. So we'd love to hear the whole thing. But before we even start, can I just ask one question? Because otherwise, I'll be just thinking about it throughout the entire presentation. Which is that this area for this project seems to be also potentially where we're looking at putting Pollard. Is that fair? So, you know, if we do a whole lot of work here, and then some decisions are made later, like, what's the timeline and how do we avoid that conflict?
Sure. So this project is only focused on engineering design. That's the grant funded us to get to 100% engineering design, and that's it. And we'll have to go back out to identify grant funding for the construction. So the plan at this time is to hold for the moment until December, when a preferred location has been identified for Pollard. And then we'll be moving forward with identifying construction funding. But yes, absolutely, that coordination has to happen.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Anyway, and this is just for what, the area around the tot lot, right?
This is just the area near the tot lot.
Corner of the tot lot.
Well, the same thing could apply to the other project that... The... The other...
These two?
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so this is just phase two.
This is phase one.
Okay, super.
Yep.
Okay, carry on, please.
I think it's this one.
Sorry.
So I'm from the Charles River Watershed Association. My name is Ariana Proia. And kind of to give some background on how this project started. So in 2019, the Charles River Watershed Association, along with 28 watershed cities and towns, put together the Regional Charles River Climate Compact. And basically, that is a kind of partnership that CRWA facilitates, that Needham is a part of, to help focus on climate resilience in not just your community but in the watershed as a whole and how we can kind of work together. In 2020, the Climate Compact worked to develop the Charles River Flood Model, which I'll talk about. And that is kind of a tool to help address stormwater flooding at a regional scale, not just on a town-by-town basis. And through that, we use that model to identify site-specific projects to address local and regional flooding. So for the Charles River Flood Model, so it is basically, it's on the CRWA's website, but it's an interactive map that you can go on and input your address in and see how flooding is affected at any specific address. And we use this pretty heavily to identify when and where flooding will occur. And we also use this to help look at mitigating factors. So using nature-based solutions like rain gardens, stuff we're going to talk about here tonight, to help mitigate and how well that affects with it. This was put together through the Climate Compact with Wetson and Sampson and some of our staff as well. And basically, I would just want to say, like, one thing we really talk about with the flood model is that we really need not just the kind of like technical part of things, we really do need community input from it because that's how we kind of really can get to these equitable solutions. So just a little bit of background on how we kind of identify and prioritize sites. We look at an array of things. So that could be from community input, the impacts to kind of specific vulnerable populations based on climate change. We also look at community support. And we kind of rank those and then help towns and cities to kind of decide what works best for them in identifying those priority projects. So for the Alderbrook area, in spring of 2024, it was identified as a priority project. And we worked with this town to kind of develop these possible solutions to help mitigate the flooding in the Alderbrook area. We have kind of two phases we just mentioned earlier, which is one is the Defazio lot that we're going to talk about here tonight. And the other is kind of phase two, which focuses on wetland restoration. So the town did a really good job by taking these kind of concept designs you can see up there. That's kind of like the general, kind of basic concept designs. And they took that and actually turned it into a funding opportunity and got funding for the Defazio lot specifically. And like I mentioned, the secondary projects on a slightly different timeline, but that focuses more on like the wetland restoration of this. But the town did such a good job with doing that. And we've been really grateful for them to kind of work with on it.
So I'm just going to speak a little bit more about our site. So as Ariana mentioned, that series of concepts was developed through an MVP grant. And recognizing that there were a lot of projects that would need to be phased over a series of time, we decided to focus on the very first project at the far-left corner, which was the Defazio Parking Lot, and look at an opportunity to try to implement some green stormwater infrastructure practices. So utilizing nature-based solutions that would help us to both improve water quality, so helping to reduce phosphorus load, which also help us as we try to meet our goals for our MS4 and NITIS permit requirements, also improve water quality as it's flowing into Alderbrook and then the Charles River, and also helping to reduce flooding, recognizing that this is a priority location for flooding in the town as well. So this is a photo of the corner of the lot where this project is located. You might recognize it because it is an area that frequently has standing water. We were just over there today and there was still standing water in the corner. So it's memorable for that reason. So in terms of project timeline, so we identified a potential funding opportunity through the Charles River Watershed Association, actually. And the Office of Coastal Zone Management has a coastal habitat and water quality grant that we were able to pursue. And we're able to be awarded about $125,000 in funding. So the project started back in August 2024. That red box indicates where we are right now. Towards the end of the project, we'll be wrapping up June 30, 2025. So we're currently at about 50% engineering design. Go to the next slide. So throughout the course of the project, there's been opportunities for community outreach and engagement. We did a presentation back in February to the Stormwater by-Lot Working Group, some of which you got to hear a preview of already. So that was back when we only had design concepts. Those concepts were also presented on a public meeting on Zoom on February 10. We also ran a survey online from May 5 to the 20th. We had about 150 respondents. And those folks were weighing in on some of the plantings and signage. So this was when we were hitting that 50% mark. We also had posts about the project in News You Needem. And the town and CRWA social media accounts have also featured some different opportunities to weigh in on the project as well. Turn it over to Chris to talk about the design.
Yeah, so here we are showing existing conditions for the site. You can see at the lower southwest corner of the site is the entrance to the parking lot. To the bottom is your tot playground, the existing tot playground. And then the area of concern is this lower right-hand corner between the tot and the woods to the right, where the ponding is happening. And to the north is all the existing parking. And to your east is the existing DPW facilities. So with the new design, we're showing a graded, regrading of the lot, as well as the inclusion of a bio retention area to the lower right-hand corner that fits in line with where the existing ponding has already been happening. So you're not really losing any space in terms of parking area just due to how the existing conditions, you know, the water takes a very long time to filtrate through. So it's pretty much impervious, is what we're designated as. And so as part of this regrading, you know, we're dropping grades down about one and a half to two feet in order to provide enough sheet flow to the new bio retention area. And then within this lot bio retention, we have two new inlet control structures that will help as like a pretreatment for sediment due to the gravel nature of the site, since it's not a paved lot. And this bio retention will include a bunch of different plantings that we'll go over in the next few slides. And, yep.
I'm sorry. If the grade is changing, one and a half to two feet, I presume you mean from the outside lot?
Yeah, so we're cutting that outside boundary line is where we're showing the cut. So all those arrows are showing the new flow path.
So does that also mean that those parking spaces will be lost?
It's a very... It's gentle enough where, yes. Yep. Yep, yeah. And as you can see on this site plan, there's also an overflow, emergency overflow for any flow over a half an inch of volume depth. It's not really a project that's going to solve any major flooding that the town has, as this is only phase one of the project. So it'll, but it'll help to manage that half-inch flow that we were talking about.
Sorry. I think you can tell that there's emergency overflow, but...
Yeah, so I'm zooming in now. So now you can kind of see it better. Yeah, yep. So as you can see, this is a more zoomed-in version of it. So you see the inlet control structures I was talking about at those two corners. And then within the inside, you have your different varieties of plantings that I also will show with the actual rendering that helps to visualize it a bit better. But down towards that eastern part of the zoomed-in version, there's like a sodded area with an overflow that has like a rock to help manage some of that erosion. And it goes directly into the woodlands, to the nearby woodlands.
Thank you.
And then here, here's a rendering that helps to show that there's a granite curbing along the edge of the new bio retention area, as well as a wooden guardrail for additional protection. And then we also have an educational panel, like board, that helps provide any residents with information about what this project is, you know, how it's helping the town, you know, with, you know, bringing back pollinators to the localized ecosystem as well as treatment of, you know, pollutants.
I'm sorry, I have a question. So I'm looking at the granite curbing. So I'm looking at the granite curbing. How does the water get?
So there's these two inlet control structures on these two edges. I wish I could have the, I don't think the pointer will work. But you can see here, see, there's one there.
So the water's going to go only in those two little gaps?
Exactly.
Not, okay.
Yeah, so it'll all be graded towards those inlets. And then, as you can see along the edges, New England perennial wildflower mix. And so here's just additional rendering showing the different varieties of plantings. We have witch hazel, which are a bit larger bush here, some nannenberry with white flowers. A red oak tree will be planted near the existing woodland line, some different ornamental grasses within the center of the rendering, oops, sorry, within the rendering, just to provide some variety of color with green, as well as a perennial mix, as I was just discussing. So here, we're just showing red, but in reality, it'll be a variety of different colors, red, purple, white, yellow. And it should help to, you know, promote different pollinators coming into the area. And, yeah. And are there any additional questions regarding the project?
So the point of this is to trap phosphorus, right?
Yes, phosphorus is the main goal of nutrient removal, yes.
Because after this, it goes down into where across and out all the block under...
Into the Charles River, exactly.
Do we anticipate that drawing some of this water into the bio-retention basin will help with the problem with the parking lot, like keeping the parking lot floods and pits?
Yeah, I mean, this area is graded, it'll be graded in such a way where it's actually going to hold the water instead, and then it'll allow it to percolate back or infiltrate back into the ground, rather than just sitting there.
But it's still storms of a certain size.
Yeah, storms of a certain size, that's why we have the overflow, emergency overflow to provide a pathway for the water to go, once it's first been treated. And that initial runoff, that treats the majority of the phosphorus that's going to the site.
Okay. For people like me who remember Ken Denisco's study of any place where we could potentially put a school, what year was that, Kate?
2007?
Six, yeah, I was going to say around that. This entire area is blue, just in case you wonder, which means it's all basically underwater. So, yeah.
Fantastic. Gabby?
What's our phosphorus load now? Do you know? Or how far behind are we?
That's a good question.
Very far behind.
Seriously, all right, like, what are we supposed to be hitting?
So we're supposed to, you're supposed to reduce your phosphorus load by nearly 500 pounds by 2028? 2026? And we are probably at 75?
Are we, are we behind in relation to other communities, other similar communities as well, or just in relation to the standard?
Every community is different that we work with. Every, every, there's different problems and different setbacks. You have the, by far, the highest load reduction requirement because you drain, the Charles River is all around the town. So everything drains directly to the Charles predominantly. So other towns have less impervious area, have less, less of a requirement because of that, the land use is different. So EPA set a standard for every particular town. And that's, and that's the challenge you have, is one of the highest towns. You also, as part of the flood study, we realized why. Much of the, much of your wetlands and rivers were all filled in in the 50s and 60s. So a lot of the, you don't have a lot of treatment inland as many of the other communities do. So unfortunately, that's, that's what you have to live with right now.
Good to know.
But it's, it's, so just so you know, I don't know if you were aware of the cost for phosphorus load reduction. It's about $75,000 a pound. So when you multiply that by...
425.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot of money. So, I mean, we've been working with Tom and Justin and their group to put in these things in, in all the projects we have that we can, so that we can at least make a dent in it. But it's a significant cost.
How much does it cost again?
Seven. About 70, right now, it's running about $75,000 a pound.
$75,000, okay.
And so Gabby, for our permitting, is it necessary to show that we are doing our best, or is it necessary to show that we are achieving the goal?
Yes, yes to both. So this, this is a very small project relative to, it does treat the area based on the requirements of the stormwater policy and your regulations. So it does meet that goal. There's not a whole lot more you can do to increase that because I think we're at, what, 95% treatment?
Yeah.
So it's, you could, you could make it bigger, but you'd get, you know. And because this treats a half an inch of flow, which is a very small amount, you know, in order to, you know, your 10-year storm runs you around five or six inches. And, and, and so this is not going to control any flooding, so.
It'll get you about a 1.4-pound reduction.
But this is going to cost a lot more than 175, wow.
It's about a one, we're saying estimated 180, 180,000, yeah.
This is not the low budget.
No, it's not a low budget, yeah.
What is the low-budget option?
We typically just connect drains to underground infiltration systems. In the shoulder, there are, those are the...
Like South Street.
Right, exactly, exactly.
And is that just as effective?
Yes. But this is going to, this is going to serve more than just, it's going to be a, you know, a part to the top lot, it's going to be an education piece.
Sure, yeah.
It's going to be, you know, so it's...
Yeah, 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 no, I get it, that there are other benefits, I just feel like we should know what all the options are.
Right, we're just, we're just trying to meet the goal at the minimum we can in most, most areas, so.
Okay. Do you have a question?
So I heard this presentation earlier, my, just to repeat a couple things, this is part of like a planned six-phase project with Alderbrook, right?
Yeah, yes, these were, these were all, a series of projects that were identified through the MVP grant that CRWA secured. So we haven't investigated any of the other concepts yet, just beyond that initial review by CRWA, that this first project in the far-left corner is the very first one where we've actually done, you know, like a site study to identify what are the actual options and given, you know, logistical implications and not wanting to lose parking, like trying to weigh those costs and benefits. This is the only one that's really been like thoroughly investigated, I would say.
And is this the first, like, this is a prerequisite for doing any of the others, would you say?
No, I wouldn't say it's a prerequisite. This was just, it felt like a good, small bite at the apple, if that makes sense to start with. And the fact that it's grant-funded is a very nice benefit.
I think our, like, you said it better. I mean, we have a long way to go to tackle stormwater issues in town, not just phosphorus reduction, but also flooding. I mean, this, the neighborhoods around here, like around Alderbrook, were hit really hard. And then there are many other areas in town that also have to be addressed. And so I think in terms of like direct impact, this is measurable. We know exactly which parcels are affected by, you know, these water bodies and how, how we can mitigate them. And so I think it's very worthwhile dollars spent, but it's a lot of money. I mean, we need to save for it.
Is, is this project going to help the surrounding neighborhoods?
So this, this area, so we, we also did the townwide flood study. We just completed, and we hope to present it to you shortly. But the, this area is one of the hardest areas that's flooded, and it comes in from everywhere. So all the way from Chestnut Street down and all the way, geez, it all converges here in this area. The reservoir itself overtops, the field is inundated, the Alderbrook on, on, on the opposite side of Denham Ave, we're working on a culvert there. So this whole area gets flooded pretty quickly. And it's a, it's a pretty critical area. It closed down Denham Ave, that's a major artery in your town, so. So, but any, this will, this will provide a piece of not significant, mind you, but the town has, has been adding little significant pieces and developing places that have added over the last 100 years. So now we're trying to reverse it, but it's going to be a long process.
Which is one impact, something you said, you mean adding impermeable surfaces or adding...
Right, adding treatment, adding storage, adding, you know, capacity increases, you know.
They're all different pieces of the puzzle. So you have the treatment phase, but then you look at like Georgia Jaget, where you have culverts that literally need to be, get bigger and expanded, which then allows more capacity to flow through that area. You know, everything kind of works together, but focused differently.
Do you have anything?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I was just interested, I think you mentioned there's an educational aspect of this. Is, is this the kind of thing that homeowners that are experiencing flooding could replicate on their own land to some extent? Is that part of the educational benefit?
Yep, yeah, that's definitely one of the, one of the pieces. I, I know we're, we have a Needham High School intern through the Town Hall Intern Program, very grateful for that, who's helping to put together some background information about installing a rain garden at your home. What are some things to think about? And we're hoping to use some photos from the renderings with this project to kind of show as an example. And we have other members of staff who have rain gardens at their homes, hoping to show examples of those as well.
And I was going to say, there's a couple in town. So I think it's, I think it's really helpful for people to see one in context of a home so they can imagine how it might work on theirs. Great. Can I just ask a question? You talked about fill over time in town. So I think the, right, Needham was dug out to fill in back there, and that other things have, have been filled in. But the issue is that fill that has filled in in places in town is denser and less permeable than whatever else, or, so it creates more of an issue, or is there...
Yeah, so wetlands in and of themselves provide natural treatment of runoff, okay? It also provides natural storage. However, because land in Needham has become so valuable in that particular time, the regulations weren't in place to restrict development. So there are many neighborhoods, probably most of the neighborhoods we investigated in some way were because they filled in wetlands and/or they culverted streams with pipes that are now too small and such. So, but there's a, there's a balance that has to happen because we can open those pipes up, but we're going to flood another neighborhood, right? So, so there's got to be a real planning effort to figure out how, where we're going to flood, so.
Thank you.
One question, it's not related, but kind of related. Just want to see your reaction, if your eyes pop out of your head. We say, we might build a school by next to this, is that okay?
So again, it's...
Marion says it's all blue.
It's a safety thing, too, because Denham Ave floods, right? So having a school in proximity to a flooded area is, 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 you know, it's going to limit access, you know, emergency. I, I, you know, I haven't, I haven't been part of the study in general, but I think there needs to be some attention to the flooding issue in conjunction with whatever you're planning.
Sure. Good to know.
Excellent.
And I note, we have a very limited amount of land, so we are going to have difficult choices wherever we go.
Right. It may require a very big storage facilities underneath your fields to be able to absorb that, you know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Our next topic for discussion is a Notice of Traffic Regulation for Mayo Ave, Pinewood Road, and Harris Ave. And Karis is still online with us, and Justin Cullen, who is here from the Transportation Safety Committee. So, fill us in.
Sure, so Karis is online, but I can kind of...
Whichever you think is...
We didn't really prehers, but this is obviously a, this is something that came from the Traffic Safety Committee, in which has been going on for, for a number of years. There's been some concern that has been submitted to us by a number of residents with regards to drop off and pickup at Pollard with the two crossing guards that they have there. There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there's actually eight marked crossings, if you consider the out, the driveways as well, but the, from Mayo to Pinewood, I believe it is, they have two, two crossing guards. There are obviously a number of movements that vehicles can do. They can do U-turns, they can do left-hand turns. And this was an idea that came out to restrict the movements during certain hours, obviously Monday through Friday, seven to eight and two to three, which are the dismissal hours for, for Pollard, to basically reduce the turning movements of cars going on, on Harris that would be coming both northbound and southbound, of taking a U-turn at the two crossings, as is in the map in your agenda packet, as well as taking a left-hand turn off of either, I think it's Mayo and...
Pinewood.
Pinewood, yes. So that would be a left-hand turn, so that would be anyone crossing. Basically, all of these restrictions are meant to keep the cars from crossing that central median. A number of years ago, there was a project to potentially think about closing those off. This is obviously doing something from a regulatory perspective, instead of hardening and closing it out. And I think it's a, it's a decent compromise. It doesn't, I don't think the burden is going to be significant, because I actually was driving around and you would just take a right, and then you can take, there is a, there is a way to take a U-turn in between the two crossings, as well as to the, both the north and south of those crossings. So I don't think the burden to restrict U-turning, there is one, the buses will be allowed, there is a buses-only allowable to be able to cross, and that's with the crossing guards, obviously permission, that happens on a regular basis. But that we, we talked to Shane and we, and the school, and we said that obviously we don't want to restrict the movements of that, that's something that is done at the time. But this is reducing the number of vehicles that would be taking a U-turn or a left-hand turn within those hours. Karis, I don't know if you had anything?
No, only just to mention that when we've talked about the school itself, we've indicated that, like, if you were to build a new middle school there, you would not design it this way with all the turning movements. So simplifying that during drop-off and pickup will help with the, just the traffic management in that area.
So traffic management, also pedestrian safety? I mean, has that been an issue, or is this just about clearing the area?
For, for pedestrian, I mean, a number of crossing guards that I've talked to, as well as the lieutenant, this is something that does, there's a lot of near misses anecdotally, but it does happen, you know, we're trying to manage a crossing on both sides of Harris with one officer to, or one crossing guard to be able to stop kids from just wanting to come across, and then also cars that are just coming up. And it is just a large management of traffic. And so it is, it is going to be pedestrians, especially the pedestrians are going to be, you know, junior high kids. So I've watched this a lot. I have, I drop my daughter off every morning and I, it's, it is something to, it's, there's a lot of near misses. So I think that this is an appropriate mitigation. It's, it is a regulatory change, the police, this gives a tool that, you know, obviously there's an educational component with this, but the police can eventually start to enforce this. And then, but I think that's, it's a reasonable mitigation.
When we, just to add to that, when we redid the crosswalks a couple of years ago when we renovated the roadway there, we did try to channelize the pedestrians to the outer corners of the traffic pattern, so that way they were away from the cars. And this further separates them because it takes the turning movement away from the two areas where there's crosswalks.
Great. Okay. Comments? Marion?
Justin, was there a public hearing of this that folks at the school were noticed about or how was that handled?
We did speak to the principal. We did, and we spoke to Shane, the transportation department. This was something that we brought in front of the Transportation Safety Committee. This was obviously an agenda item on a couple different, a couple different meetings. There was an actual person, a resident who brought it to us initially that kind of helped to groundswell that. We didn't necessarily have a public hearing, but nonetheless, this was something that went through the process of TSC on multiple meetings. We did discuss it. And then we also wanted to talk to Principal Downey. We talked to Shane. We talked to Lieutenant McGrath, who's on the TSC, as well as Lieutenant, she's the one that does the crossing guards. Yes, Belinda Cow. And we obviously mentioned them as well as engineering.
Do you know how this, how these new regulations will impact traffic? So where will the cars go if they can't turn?
They can, it depends upon what road you're coming down. Instead of taking a left, you can either take a right and then there is a U-turn. At every one of the two for both Pinewood, there is a free U-turn you can take available. So if you were to take a left, you just got to take a right and then take a U-turn at the next available U-turn. You know what I mean?
You're saying... It's going to allow the driver to drive an additional block.
Yes. It's about a block burden, if you will, because if you're coming down Mayo or whatever, you'll have to take, you can't take a left now across. You'll have to take a right and then U-turn at the next available U-turn to go down. So the burden is a block. Perhaps, you know, between eight and nine and two and three, overtime behavior will be they're coming back on the great plain or changing an alternate path. But I think obviously as these, you know, signs go up and as these changes go across, there's going to be people that I think, okay, we may have to go a block this way or a block this way. But there isn't, we're not sending a detour all the way around, you know, town to get around. You can still use Harris, there's enough U-turns there. You know, it's a block, block and a half burden.
The other thing, this was maybe just my confusion. When I first read this, I didn't understand the hours. Between 7:00 AM and 2:30 PM, two to three. I, I mean, for me, between 7:00 to 8:00 AM and between 2:00 and 3:00 PM is clearer, but I don't know if there's enough space on the sign.
It's, Tyler has done a mock-up of the sign. We've ordered the signs. I mean, like it's, it is done. You'll see school zones throughout the state. They'll actually do, I've seen some crazy ones. They'll do four different blocks of time depending upon if it's a multi-layer school. And those are like a little bit too burdensome, but this is really two blocks plus, you know, I'll just say school day or Monday through Friday. But yes, we can fit it on there, but you know, there are, obviously this is going to be, this isn't meaning to, the police are going to be ticketing every single day. This is obviously a learning curve. We're trying to reduce the number of cars that are going through there. And as, you know, as time goes on, I think it will, behavior will be modified.
Those little neon "new" signs are really good.
Yes, we will. And we will, the new signs are able to be put up for now, under the MUTCT 11th edition, they're able to be put up for a year. They were for six months before, but yes, so.
Excellent. Okay. Kathy?
No, I mean, I think this makes sense. I mean, it's just getting people to sort of avoid the school area entirely, maybe. You know, people will eventually learn like, don't go down, you know, Pinewood. Just if you're on great plain, just go further if you want to get to Harris.
I've noticed because of, as Karis mentioned, the bulk of folks that are coming up to, and they drop off on the right-hand side of Pollard before the crossing, they can still take a U-turn there because the crossing was modified to the far side. So there still is a U-turn able, you know, in that first area. So that's where the bulk of these cars are going. You know what I mean? This is really, they don't go, from my observations, into the middle between the two crosswalks as much. They're either turning beforehand or they're going all the way through and coming out. So that's just from my, from my study of, an observation.
Kevin, anything?
It's, I spent much too much time looking at this yesterday, last night. But yeah, no, doing, having people take U-turns through crosswalks is a random rogue move that can be really dangerous. And so this makes sense to calm that down. Yeah, let's do it.
All right. Any more discussion? Then I would welcome a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the board vote to approve and sign a notice of traffic regulations, permit number R25-05-27, requiring that left turns be prohibited on Mayo Avenue southbound at Harris Avenue westbound between 7:00 to 8:00 AM and 2:00 to 3:00 PM. Left turns be prohibited on Pinewood Road southbound at Harris Avenue westbound between 7:00 AM and 2:00 to 3:00 PM. Left turns and U-turns be prohibited on Harris Avenue eastbound at Pinewood Road between 7:00 to 8:00 AM and 2:00 to 3:00 PM, except buses. U-turns be prohibited on Harris Avenue westbound at Pinewood Road between 7:00 to 8:00 AM and 2:00 to 3:00 PM. Left turns be prohibited on Harris Avenue eastbound at Mayo Avenue northbound between 7:00 to 8:00 AM and 2:00 to 3:00 PM.
That's why we waived the warrants at Plankville.
So I do think it would be great if the, you know, the school population got specific notice of this information, aside from the signs and all. I mean, I know those PTC bulletins have a lot of information, but...
We could certainly speak to Jessica and just have her send some information out. She's aware of this, she's endorsed it and all that, but we could certainly have her.
Just, or...
Does it count? Oh, no, is it? I'm sorry.
Camilla.
I'm sorry. My other daughter is going to be Iraq.
And Justin?
Yes.
I actually think it might be an interesting idea for you or for somebody, Karis, to do like a quick video with a map, like literally showing people that could be linked from this announcement. Sometimes a picture really helps.
Okay.
And just to...
Yeah.
Like this is a what you don't do, sometimes some instruction on what you do do. You know what I mean? Some little map of like, go this way.
These are the areas, a school, kind of a school drop-off flow, circulation flow.
How you go, because sometimes, oh, I can't do this now. What do I do? I'm confused, you know?
And that can be part of the communication from the school, this is what the drop-off.
And when the signs going up?
That I don't know.
Do you need it published in the paper?
Yeah, there needs to be a notification.
Okay.
So probably not until fall at this point, right?
But at this point, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily say that or advocate for putting it up if we're about to go out in school. And so this could be something that we could plan for, for a rollout and communication plan to come out for, you know, for September.
Great. Great. All right. Any other discussion? Okay. Then all in favor? Aye. Those opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Okay. The next thing is a full third of our packet, 155-page masterpiece from our Director of Finance. So Dave Davison. Elise. And Cecilia, are you coming up?
Okay.
It's 33% of the packet. Come on up. Fantastic. Okay, tell us the whole thing.
Yes, Madam Chair. From the good work of your treasurer, I'm happy to report that the town received five competitive bids, certainly much better than the interest rate that you all saw last month. That the bids range between the 3.5% and 4% coupon rates. And the winning bidder, actually with the premium, offered us a net interest cost of As noted in the memo, this is financing a number of projects the town is currently undertaking, including the rooftop units, which you talked a little about, a different capacity at the Elliott and Zoom Brontbette School for your energy efficiency and climate concerns, as well as final bills for the public safety project that completely closed that project out officially. One of the, one of the last major borrowings associated with the Emory Grover Building and the work down at Claxton Field, as well as the ongoing water distribution system improvements. This is a short-term note. It's going to mature in October, at which time we will do a partial paydown and then be rolling the balance into a new debt instrument at that time. We did meet with Standard and Poor's, the finance team. It's the first time we met with them in a couple of years. And happy to report that after our conversations and the review of the town's financials, that the town has maintained its AAA rating on its outstanding debt. The short-term rating, which is what affects the note, is SP1+, that's the highest rating a community can receive. And more importantly, they, right now, the outlook for Needham is stable. That's as good as you can get for financing. A number of points that they had raised as credit highlights, that's in the summary report that we provided to you, was, of course, the town's continued use and creation of special stabilization funds, but more importantly, that we have some dedicated revenue streams going to them. Of course, stormwater mitigation fees go directly to the stormwater fund, which will be funding future NITIs capital projects, as well as, most recently, at town meeting is change the athletic facility improvement fund by having 40% of the pool receipt starting at July 1st to go right into the fund, knowing that there's going to be capital investments. And this is not the major capital investments. These are more the ongoing equipment replacements for the pool. But several hundred thousand dollars in the next three to five years, for instance. And of course, the sale of surplus property going into the capital equipment fund. They, of course, noted that they continue to see that we do use realistic budgeting assumptions when we put our budgets together. Also noted that the FY '26 budget was funded within existing resources and consistent with past approved budgets. They did note that when we talked about future investments that we'll be doing, and that has been there, is the middle school project is one that they have taken of note. Very rarely do they call a project out in their rationale, but they did note that the size of that project will mind watching. But given the town's past practice, one that a project of that magnitude would not move forward unless it was supported by the voters in Needham with a debt exclusion, and also that the town will not abandon its ongoing cash capital investment. Very important is when all resources are put to a single project, the rest of the assets of the community cannot be neglected because that's only building up problems into the future. And the fact is that our balancing of cash capital versus debt finance is something that they have noted over the years and continue to note again.
I was wondering about that. You mentioned that override specifically. What, the fact that people are voting for the debt, I guess I don't understand the impact that that has on their rationale.
Well, it shows even more support that the community is willing to pay the additional taxes to finance it, as well as it doesn't crowd out the operational and your more routine debt finance projects.
Okay. Thank you.
A couple of the things they noted is, which you just discussed again earlier this evening, is about the board having a climate action plan. Realistic as though many folks don't realize how much the finance field and the insurance industry are very mindful and concerned about, concerns about how communities are responding to climate change because losses do happen and they're expensive. And it's pure dollars and cents that they are looking at it. And they did acknowledge that the town has, they did acknowledge the town adopted climate action plan in their rationale. And the last point is they, of course, said that Needham is in a better position than the United States government enhanced rationale, that Needham has a better credit rating than the United States government, which they touched upon. There's a number of documents for the board to sign, that the same documents that you should sign with every other time, which our treasurer will be distributing at the appropriate time. And at that, I will pause and we're happy to take any questions you may have.
Karen? Karen?
Thank you. Going through this is a lot of, it's interesting reading, and I love the AAA and the SP1+ plus, but I didn't get the part about the environmental stuff being so important. So thank you for pointing that out. That was good.
Josh?
Yeah. Your last comment was interesting, comparing the US financial situation to the federal. So like usually for national governments, there's debt to GDP ratios. Is there some analogous metric for a town?
Yes, they do look at that in terms of a lot more of our resources are local-based, so we don't have the same exposure that some other municipalities may have with cutbacks in aid, as well as just the management practices of the town are viewed more favorably than the management practices at the state or federal levels.
Marion?
So I guess I would have just said for people who, I know that there's been a lot of talk lately and some of it falls in the realm of kind of the sky is falling. And I think that certainly the Pollard project is a major concern for all of us. We're all very interested in figuring out where it lands and what's required and what that financial picture is going to look like. But, but for anybody who's curious about the town's financial condition, these documents from Standard and Poor's or developed by them are actually a really good primer in the town's financial practices and where we stand with respect to those and how they regard it. So it's always helpful and interesting, I think, to read these when they do come out every few years and see where we are lately, where other people think we are because thanks to you and to your team, Dave, for all the hard work that I know it takes to continue to keep us in this spot.
Madam Chair, I would note that being stable is really a high bar. The most Needham thing ever is that we're cheering when we're stable. So I can't underestimate that, you know, their communities are on watch status. And every time we get this, the practices of the finance department are praised by S and P, which is a really important thing.
I guess I'd just like to reassure residents that I think this is like fantastic news, but it doesn't mean that we're home free. I mean, we have a lot of hard decisions yet to make and all of this will play into that. I just, I don't want people to think that because we have good news here that we're not taking the upcoming projects seriously. We are.
It is important to say that we're stable because of our past practices and they're expecting our past practices to continue. And again, that critique and analysis in terms of when doing projects. And to the point is, the most recent debt financing outlook is one of those tools that used in terms of when projects can be undertaken and recognizing when they're coming, when we all need to plan for the financing of them.
Yes. When an override comes along, can you remind us, is that a simple majority of the town or?
Yes, ballot questions are always by majority.
And a four-fifths vote of this board, right? To put it...
Two-thirds, but which is effectively four-fifths.
Which is a thing.
Okay. All right. So any other discussion?
I appreciated the rate being lower than the last one we did on the last band, so this was a good thing.
All right. Well, in that case, Kate, must we read the entire?
It was posted online, so, and is available to be viewed by anybody from the board if their wishes can take up all the motions at once.
So we can move the motions all at once as presented in the materials for the meeting?
Correct.
Wonderful. Do we have a second? Second. Okay, fantastic. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you all. Thank you all.
This included the signature pages for the select board and for the rest, so it doesn't quite match what you received.
Okay, so all of us, and we're signing that right now.
And then there's the document Mr. Lebby signs.
Thank you for sending that.
Oh, I just signed on the wrong line.
I have duplicates.
Sorry.
We planned for this.
All right, so if you can go ahead and start. I'll get that last one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well-prepared.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are they?
They're all the same.
And they're the same?
Yeah, they're duplicates as well.
On the back, it's not.
Yeah. Thank you. This is, this is like a really long report. I'm just trying to find the next agenda item. Okay.
Which is the town manager's report.
Yes. And there's this as well. Just wanted to make sure this wasn't a duplicate, so that's that one as well.
Yep.
And just as a reminder, what the board is signing those signature pages, they relate to the note itself, the tax certificate, which is effectively that Bond Council's researches, based upon the questions, is that these monies are being spent for the public's benefit, not for private, for private gain. It is also the continuing disclosure, that's a requirement, that should the town do something it's not supposed to do, that we will notify bondholders promptly, as well as through the annual filing, which is available to all investors to read. And then there's also the statement that there's no litigation against the town that would have a materially impact on our ability to repay the notes.
Thank you.
Oh, there's two more.
Who's left?
There he is.
That's his signature.
All right.
I think that's all of them.
I think so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. It's good news.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to our town manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have two items. The board had asked me for an update on the non-essential outdoor water use restriction, otherwise known as the water ban. The state affirmed in early May the Level 1 drought status for Needham. They don't meet again until June 9th, so, even though it feels like it rains every day, we'll see what happens on June 9th. I think it actually does rain every day. But the question I have for the board is, you know, the confusion, the concern that people have is that our MWRA-fed neighbors are not under any water use restriction, and it can be confusing to them, and we're, as Karis had mentioned, we're trying to enforce by education and not by issuing tickets in this very confusing system of, you know, before nine and after five, and one day a week. So one thing the board, just for backup history, water supply, water suppliers like Needham had a legacy of registered water. So this is water that was sort of, we were entitled to have, no matter what happened. And then there came a system of permits where you could purchase more water to pump from your wells, but you had to take a permit, and over the years, those permits had conditions put in them, so that our permitted water, we had to implement a non-essential outdoor water use restriction in 2013, we had to seek permission at town meeting for water gauge devices, if you recall, that was not particularly something that we really wanted to do, but we had to do. And so in 2017, the board took up the issue of asking the state if we could be considered, you know, special, because we have this dual source. And at the time, what ended up happening is the board realized that we could live within our registered water, and we could supplement with the MWRA in the summer, which is what we do. So we sought permission to give up that permit for that little extra bit of water, which was approved, and so we fell back on the registered water, which was not in any way had any kind of restrictions on it. And then there came, there was actually a case, the Fairhaven case, that said you couldn't put restrictions on. And then the MassDP issued regulations restricting and conditioning the water registration. This is the lawsuit that we've talked to you about, that 19 communities, 19 water suppliers, including Needham, filed the lawsuit, which was heard at the Court of Appeals on April 14th, and we're waiting for that to come down. You know, if it comes down, the Superior Court had ruled in favor of DEP, so, you know, we don't know what'll happen, but if the conditions are allowed, then we will be under those restrictions that we are under now. If not, we would be back to where we were before 2023. So the question for the board is, is this something you would like us to continue to pursue in terms of, you know, filing some sort of proposal with the DEP that because we are water-fed by the MWRA for the summer water, which is what we're restricting, it really doesn't make any sense to be restricting water that is not a stressed water body? Or could we just wait till June 9th and see what happens? Or, I know there's been some question about whether it's something we could do, or we should be petitioning for some relief on this.
Good question. Is this an appropriate discussion to have now? Is this a discussion we should have in the context of all our goals? I think that's a question for you. I mean, is this something that you're going to say, no, we could get this done if we do it right now? Or is it not? It seems to me, I just have to observe that anything with our water has been slow and painful, in my experience, over the years. So I would think it's not something that could necessarily be done quickly. I do think it's probably the right thing to do if we find, if the court case comes down in DEP's interest, or if we find we're still here after June 9th, the question comes up. But, you know, otherwise, I just think it's a question of, do we look at it within the context of all our goals, and how do we want staff resources to be deployed?
That's, can you remind us how long we've been at it with this lawsuit? Like, when did this, when did we start this?
The regulations were issued in 2023.
So, so, I mean, is it realistic to think that we're going to have any kind of word on this before their next meeting?
Oh, no.
Yeah, no, okay, so this is like a, this is a long-term solution, potentially?
Yeah, this would be more likely to be a solution for the summer of '26.
Yeah, okay.
Or, I should say, a petition, I...
Just so I understand, so we're obviously pursuing this litigation. Right, that's one path, but what, what you're asking us to consider is a different path of just going straight to DEP and asking for relief, or what are, or are you, are you talking about appealing?
No, so members of the community and, or members individually have asked, is what else could we do if we lose this?
Oh, if we lose?
Right, so.
Well, we could appeal.
Needham is, you know, Needham is special.
We have AAA bond.
But the fact that we're limiting water that we're buying from a source that's not distressed is different.
But I'm just trying to understand the pathway that you're talking about. Are you talking about appealing a loss in the Court of Appeals?
No.
Or are you talking about?
Totally separate endeavor.
Going and essentially lobbying the state to say, again, we're special? Or what, what is exactly the pathway that we're talking about?
It would be engaging the DEP to see whether they would consider Needham, you know, the case that we have to make.
And we've so differently from the other communities that they currently have us bucketed with, which are the other registered water communities.
Yeah.
So we haven't tried that yet?
No, we were going to do it that way in 2017, but instead, we gave up the permit, which worked until 2023, in which case now there's being conditions put on.
The two aren't mutually exclusive, are they? I mean, could we?
Well, it wouldn't be necessary if the lawsuit, if the Court of Appeals issues in our favor.
Sure, but since we don't know when that might happen, could we also, like, in a parallel path, pursue a special dispensation or whatever it is that?
You could. We expect the decision by the end of August.
Oh, could wait.
So, I mean, discussing it in the context of the goals, I think is probably a really good idea. It just, I know people had said, isn't there anything we could do? And I think that's probably, if the restrictions, the conditions on the registered water prevail, I think that's your, your next step.
How many communities are in our vote with two water sources?
Karis, there. Does she have an answer to that?
She is.
Karis would know more than I would.
She's got her hand up.
Thank you, Karis.
Hi, so Wellesley is also part of the suit, and they also have two water sources with both their own and MWRA.
Thank you, Karis.
I'm not aware that they've said anything in Wellesley, it's very interesting. Huh. So it doesn't sound like there's immediate action?
There's, there's no, we could write a letter immediately, but there's no immediate solution, so if you want to put this on that goal list, that would be fine.
Yeah, I think so. That makes sense to me.
Are we maxing out on our registered water? We, we're not, right? We have a, the amount we can draw every day, right?
Yes.
All right, we're not hitting that, right?
Well, Karis, you had better to answer Kevin's question, Mr. Keen's question, about how close we get to the registered water limit on a daily basis?
So it's an average over the year, and so we absolutely do our best to max out our capacity under our registered water to limit what we purchase for MWRA. We may go over that in the summer in order to purchase less from MWRA, and then in the winter, if the demands are lower than what our registered water are, our average would be lower during that time.
Okay.
But our MWRA purchase is primarily for outside watering, right?
Yes. Yes, or, or it can happen during the year if a well goes down or if some other factor.
Right.
But the purchasing water from the MWRA is more expensive.
Madam Chair, maybe another question for Karis. Are we currently purchasing water from MWRA? Have we entered the summer season?
Yes, we are.
Is that, is that direction for, for us?
I think, yeah, it sounds like we're going to put it on our goal list and have a discussion about it.
But meanwhile, people should continue to not water.
Well, I mean, if they're watering these days.
Other than Sundays before nine and after five.
Right. If you want to grow mushrooms on your lawn.
Yeah. Curiously.
To be fair, that's just this week, but, yes.
Just the, the last item for us is that we have sent a letter on behalf of the Housing Authority. They're applying to, through One Stop for Housing Choices and Housing Works funding for seabeds, so that's part of their suite of funding options for a million dollars. So we've sent a letter in support of that. And I just note, you know, with that and the actions of town meeting, really, two of the top goals of the housing plan were to help support the Housing Authority properties, not just Linden Chambers, but all of them, and to increase the availability of housing for people with disabilities, and I think we've seen that tonight, too, so that's a good story.
Madam Chair, I guess I was surprised to hear that. I thought the, the reason of seeking CPA funding was to avoid seabeds competing with Linden for that same funding source.
I don't have the answer.
I can, I can reach out to Reggie.
Well, it, it's the...
It's complimentary.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Can you do it? It's a great question. The funding part they did, they did not want to compete against was the tax credits, so this is different from that. This is appropriations in the annual state operating budget for Housing Works and Housing Choice. And really, the only people they would be competing against is the town, if we were also applying for those buckets, and this cycle we are not.
Got it. Thank you.
All right, fantastic. Any other questions while we're there? Okay. Supa. All right, so now we're on for a discussion, a board discussion of the Envision Needham Center Working Group. The, the vice chair has discussed, potentially, enlarging the composition of, or changing the composition of the committee, and so, Kathy, I'll ask you to sort of give us a primer.
Sure, and actually, before we get to the composition of the committee, I thought in response to the extensive public comment that we had in the weeks from mid-April to through the hearing and even till today, that I thought I would, I would like to make a motion to give some direction to the staff and the consultants and the Envision Committee, and, but before I do that, I actually want to summarize the feedback that we've gotten, so I made a spreadsheet, because I couldn't help myself. I took all of the emails, and I went through them, and I took all of my notes of the public comment, and I put it in the spreadsheet, and who's for and who's against, and what are all the concerns. So, we have a little bit of data, this is the feedback since early April. So as we know from the Needham Observer, there were about 300 people at our May 13th meeting, 40 spoke, and then since then, we've got actually more than 60 emails, but some people were duplicates. So when I took out the duplicates, there were 92 individual people, that is residents, business owners, other concerned parties. Of that group of 92 non-duplicated individuals, 78% opposed the plan as they understood it, as it was presented, and 22% were in favor. In terms of the concerns that they mentioned, I will give them in order of number of mentions, so, starting with traffic congestion, that was mentioned by 45% of people, parking by 43%, bike safety by 20%, pedestrian safety by 15%, traffic diversion on decide streets by 14%, cost 14% of people. Other concerns that were mentioned, turn lanes, deliveries, beautification, and snow removal. So many commentators also offered suggestions for bike safety that did not require dedicated bike lanes on Great Plain Ave through Needham Center, such as routing bike traffic on other streets, or installing bike parking near the center where people could walk in. So those are, you know, what I found from recording this. So some takeaways, or my takeaways, but the current plan does not have broad public support. But the current plan does not have broad public support, if 78% of the people were opposed to it. As I mentioned, my own view at the last meeting is that Needham Center is something that belongs to everyone, and we need to pursue anything with broad consensus. And I don't think we have it yet. Which means, I think, that we need to step back and consider other plans, including essentially some version of what we have today, four lanes, a compromise case, perhaps three lanes, as well as some version of a two-lane system. And what that would also mean is we would be required to give up the state grant that is tying our hands to the bike lanes. If we're going to actually consider other cases, it's not intellectually honest to be tied to one of those cases, right? So we'd have to walk away from the grant, give up that money. That would also mean we're not obligated to do a 12-month pilot. We could do a pilot, but we are not rushing to do a pilot that has to last 12 months. In my mind, based on the concerns addressed, we'd want to evaluate any potential plan to all three of these plans, an absentee case, a compromise case, a two-lane case. For, traffic congestion, parking, bike, bike safety, pedestrian safety, impact on side streets, cost.
Economic vitality.
Economic, yes, all of the things, right? Definitely economic vitality, absolutely economic vitality. And so the Select Board, in order to decide how we should move forward, would need really a detailed study of the trade-offs of each possible plan, and really robust public feedback, right, for us to make a decision, and I think we really need those things. So I'm going to propose a motion that I'm sure we can discuss and amend and make it better, but so far, I move that the town give up the state grant that requires bike lanes in Needham Center, including a 12-month pilot. That's number one. Number two, we direct the staff, the consultant, and the Envision Committee to consider at least three possible plans to include optimal versions of our current four-lane configuration, a three-lane plan, and a two-lane plan. Number three, that the consultant and committee evaluate each plan for its impact on traffic congestion, parking, bike safety, pedestrian safety, economic vitality, and cost. Number four, that the consultant and committee gather extensive public feedback to, for each of the plans. And I would just note, and I think Heidi may, you know, if you want to speak to this further, but one of the reasons to do this evaluation is that we are going to have to open our streets anyway for drainage purposes, and particularly for the MBTA quiet zones. So since we're going to have to open our streets, it would be smart to know what we want them to look like when we close it up. So not considering these options at all, I don't believe would be prudent. So I think some consideration of how we want this to look after it's open, so, anyway.
Wow, thank you, Kathy. I love having a consultant on this left board, and I love your spreadsheet. I, I think that, I guess I would just react to what you've said, which is...
She made a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Sure. Thank you. I guess I, I, I just want to react to what you said, which is, I agree, actually, with everything that you've said. And regarding the roadwork, I want to note that the DPW, and Kares, who looks like she's still online, is going to be working to, to, to measure sort of our minimum required street opening, minimum required renovation, that's, that's going to be required for efforts with signalization and infrastructure, but also what might be required for that quiet zone crossing. And they have committed to doing that through the summer in addition to some traffic analysis from information that we actually already have, but which needs to be analyzed for this situation. So I, I do think it's important to listen to all the feedback, obviously, and looking at all the options. But I do think that it's important to look at all of the options, so I'm glad that your, your motion includes a two-lane plan, even though I hear that that's not what people are interested in. I just think it's, you know, we, we don't want to start restricting our ability. The grant, however, does seem to be restricting our ability to look at all the options, so I, as, as much as I don't want to walk away from, you know, the money, it does seem like that is a better plan, and that'll allow us to be, to customize this more for the situation that we find ourselves in. So I do, I do hope that with this information, if, if we go this route, it does seem like we'll be able to come back together in the fall with sort of more information. To me, it feels a little bit like we skipped a step, that we need feasibility, more feasibility here. And that's what I'm hoping that the DPW review will provide for us, so that we can move forward in the fall. I do want to say that I, despite this change, I do really value the work that the committee has done to date. But I, I also want to note that the committee has a really important job and needs to do the work that they are charged to do, and that includes kind of day-to-day operations, ensuring a quorum and raising a flag when impeded in their deliberations by absences, or perhaps a dilution of the charge, i.e. not considering all of the options because of the grant, or any other reason. The committee's charge is to make the best plan for, is, is to help us determine the best plan for the community, and we need them to be able to do that work in order to do that, so. I guess that's what I have to say thus far. Kevin, you're on the committee. You want to lay in?
Yeah. Kathy, thank you for doing all the numbers. It's good. The only thing I should ask is if we vote on this next week, or in the next meeting, because, like, it's a huge motion that went out, and I haven't really chewed on it. So it's, it's a, this is a lot to do on, you know, on the agenda was basically, do we add a 16th person? Now it's, do we reconfigure the whole mission? And I think that's, that's a big gulp. So I wouldn't mind, like, taking a break and looking at this and discussing it in voting next meeting.
That sounds reasonable.
Madam Chair, yeah, thank you, Kathy, for, for doing all that. I, I think it's very reasonable. I mean, I think it, it reflects all the feedback that, that we heard. I want to make sure that the, the consultants are on board with this, that they are willing to do all this work as well, because I, you know, looking through the contracts, it, I don't know. I honestly don't know. So I think that's important. Maybe taking those extra two weeks will be important to, to ask them. And then in those intervening two weeks, I might actually suggest one small change to that, that all, all of these studies fit within, or at least, I don't want to commit more money through this, through this motion.
No, definitely not.
Okay.
Some, some of this information we already have, but some of it probably would need to be new. And I'm not sure anyone... The economic vitality or economic assessment, I think, is going to need to be something that we do a little brainstorming on. To see if that will fit in this.
Where are we with the contract for? From the...
Apex?
Apex, rather, yeah. Like, if we, if we say we're not doing this, we're pulling away from this grant, what happens?
Well, I think as, as Josh mentioned, we can take the next couple of weeks to make sure that they can do this, but the, the grant was for the implementation of the pilot, and we have Apex under contact for design, and we'll just take a look at the scope and
Okay.
make sure it can fit with these parameters.
Oh, Larry.
Certainly, certainly Kares had indicated that she thought it did.
Okay.
Mary. So I have several thoughts. I thought Kathy's information was interesting and useful, but I do note that 78% for and 22% against the plan.
The other way.
Or 22% in favor, 78% against, right? When there really wasn't a plan that anybody could discern, and the plan was changing as recently as the morning before our meeting, again, like, I, I don't know what people were actually in favor of, so I, when people called me, I kept saying, so, so what is it that you don't like? Because I can't find a picture of it anywhere. And what, what I would say is that I do believe that our downtown needs some TLC, right? It's not perfect, and I understand if we watched the last meeting, that there, there is a merchant in town who says it's just right the way it is, but this is the same merchant who also would like more parking, like 10 spots that could materialize in front of her business at the moment that her clients arrive for a class, right? So it's not perfect, and there are some things that I would hope we could do. We spent a lot of time talking about the charge for this committee, and I went back and reread what's in the charge. I, I still think the charge was the right charge. What ended up happening was not actually what the charge was. So I would love to see us go back and do the charge that, that we had originally asked for. I think, I do not want us to lose sight of how we got here, right? Which is that this board, not these people, right, but this board has been on a path of safe streets in town. And we've been on that path really since 2018, when there was a tragedy in town. And if you want to talk about a hard public hearing, that is absolutely the hardest, okay? What, what we went through last week was not hard. Trust me, there's been harder, okay? So I at least sit here today still committed to safe streets. I think it's an important idea, and I think conditions that are safer for everybody, pedestrians, bikers, cyclists, cars, are actually important, and I hope that the town will move towards that increasingly over time. So I do think that's a value that we should keep. I also think that one of the things, when we put this committee together, I think we thought we were on the path to MBTA communities. I think we were optimistic that we would be looking at more housing downtown than perhaps we are right now. And I guess, as I think about this from a big picture, it seems to me that perhaps there's another piece that says, there's a challenge that I hope the planning board will take up, which says that in the downtown area, I hope they will figure out how to have multi-use buildings with housing in it by right, okay? How can they define kind of housing by right as a component of that for our downtown? Because certainly if we had more people walking downtown, not needing their car just to get to shops and restaurants, that would be a, a help as we look at this big picture. So, you know, everything's a system. There's a lot of pieces of this. They are not all in place, but they need to get in place. Fundamentally, I do agree with the idea that, I think, letting go of this grant, which handcuffed us and put us in a situation where we were asking for feedback, but in fact, it's not clear to me what we could actually do with that feedback if that grant was in place, so I do worry about that.
And I'll just add too, that I think even in the time that I've been on the board, which is considerably less than yours, there have been, you know, ebbs and flows, right? So when this project first came in front of the board, when I was here, we got just as many emails from bike advocates, people who wanted to be able to ride into the downtown, because at that time, the plan that we were looking at didn't include any kind of, you know, cyclist amenities, really. So, and I just, I mention that only because I think, you know, right now, we're at Envision, but back then, we were doing something else, and we hear from different people when different topics come up. So I just don't want to lose those voices. It's not to say that any group is more important than the other, but if we're to accommodate in some fashion everyone, or to make a compromise plan that, that at least everyone is equally unhappy with, then I just, I think it's important to kind of take a longer view than just the last three months, even though those voices are super important, and we are listening, and I think that this discussion shows that. And I also think that, again, even in the time that I've been on the board, we've done a lot of studies, parking studies, you know, space allocation, a lot of the, the dining, the outdoor dining that we've had, we, we've done space allocations, studies and, and work there. We've done overnight parking studies at our residences in town. We, there's a lot of information, including our new parking meter system, and the, the bike plan that, that was done for us by the MAPC. And I think that it's time to bring all of that stuff together, so that we can look at it sort of more holistically, and maybe find some places where those things intersect. I think we have tons of good resources to use, and I'd like to make sure that we're using all of it, so.
Madam Chair. It probably would make sense if we're, if we're gonna wait to vote on the direction to the committee, it probably makes sense to wait also on expanding the committee, just because I think the two may be tied. But I would like to just say a word of why I think it's a good idea, which we can also sort of chew over for two weeks, you know, and then vote on both of these next time. But, you know, if you look, and, and Mary Ann, I take your point about the charge of the committee. If we look at the charge, the charge makes it clear that the committee is advisory in nature. It's intended to help the Select Board make decisions based on constituency needs and desires, essentially. So if you look at the committee charge, number two is ensure that constituency needs and desires are considered. Number four is help staff and consulting engineers narrow concept choices. Number five is make recommendations to the Select Board on key milestones and decision points. So therefore, the committee, you know, we need, we, the Select Board, need detailed input from all the stakeholders to achieve the mission of the committee. And so I think, you know, maybe this is, and, and I, nobody intended it to work this way. I think there was difficulty recruiting people, and there was difficulty getting public feedback, and, and everybody was trying their best, and so this is not a criticism, but we, we ended up kind of where we were, I think, through a lack of getting those constituencies heard. And so I think, to the extent to which some of the stakeholders didn't think they could spare the time, and maybe now they're trying to spare the time because they see it's important, I would like to be inclusive of people who see this as really important to them, and, and so I think it would be good to expand the committee, to get that kind of feedback, and to be open to that feedback, and so that we, as a Left Board, can make good decisions. I think it would be helpful to us. I think it would help, if we're looking at three different plans, I think we want to actually try to optimize each one, right? So that means hearing from people who are in, really interested in bike safety and, and pedestrian safety on each plan. Like even in the four-lane plan, how is that optimized? And hearing from business owners how to optimize each plan, even the two-lane. There's probably things that can be done. So like, you, I think the devil's in the details here, and it's really easy to miss details if you don't have the right people in the room. So I know it's possibly a large and unwieldy committee, but I also think because the committee is not really making decisions and only recommendations, maybe larger size is not as bad in such an advisory committee as it might be in a more decision-making committee. So I'll just say that for now, and I, you know, I don't think, I don't think it makes sense to vote on this if we're not taking up kind of the direction to the committee today, but just as a, putting it out there.
Okay.
As a rationale.
Madam Chair, do you know, or does Kevin know if the committee's due to meet before, we meet next?
Give me a sec.
Because that would be the only reason why we might want to appoint the person earlier, but...
Well, I think we could, I mean, I don't think that two weeks is going to kill this, because if we're, if we're pondering changes to the project or recommendations to the committee, I mean, we wouldn't, even if they met.
We're meeting in June eight, June, I'm sorry, mid-June.
June 28th.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
June 28th, so, so we have another meeting before then.
Two more.
I have 18.
18th, we have one more.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm going to quote Josh Levy. When we were first making this charge, he said, "This is a very large committee." It's not a large, it's, it's not a committee, it's a Congress. And it's absolutely unwieldy. It's, and I think 16 people, it's just, it's, it's just not a level of out of control. Trying to get everyone to agree on the day... just not a level of out of control. Trying to get everyone to agree on a day, to me, is almost impossible for that many people. Trying to agree on a time gets even harder. I think if you assume a two-hour meeting with sixteen people, and there would be a presentation in there too, people probably are waiting around two hours to talk for less than like seven minutes. It's, I, it's just such an unwieldy committee. And I think, I think sixteen, this is just too much. It's, the committee just, you know, and we also, I would push back and say, we don't necessarily want people who just bring their one sort of narrow voice. We want the whole perspective. That's the filter we ask people. You don't, we're not having a person on who thinks this and that, someone who thinks that. We just want someone who brings a perspective. And I think, you know, anyone on the committee's good, they're great, but it's a, it's a hard committee to be on. The meetings are long, it's impossible to schedule them. So I think sixteen is just, you've just made the, I think you're not solving the problem, you're just making the problem worse.
Madam Chair, I, so yes, I did think it was large to begin with. I think now that we're in this situation, there's only benefits to adding more voices.
So I, I, I would also agree that this is a huge committee, right? The, the data science round committee says the optimal size of a committee is seven people. Anything over seven people, you start to sub-optimize your decision-making. We're clearly there on this committee, right? So, and the other thing that I think is, we had an intentional design that pulled from a business owner, a property owner, a restaurateur. I am dismayed, right, that there's not been the stepping forward from a property owner or from a restaurateur. Probably particularly dismayed about restaurateurs because to some extent, I think they feel protected in this, and they are already covered in some ways. So I think that's unfortunate because they're not participating in sort of an overall cohesive vision. I wish it were different. But at the same time, I would say adding more of, you know, all the same perspective, I'm not sure that that is adding value either. And I also think that there should be regular input sessions where other voices can certainly be heard, right, without their necessarily having to be on the committee. I feel like part of what we failed on here was we didn't have the outreach that was getting that input from other people along the way. And clearly, that didn't happen. But at this point, I think going to a bigger committee, my opinion is it doesn't help. Going to an even number of people, heaven help you if you have a vote and it ends up divided. I mean, it, it's all those classic things that you think about when you design a committee. We have the potential to make it more complicated by adding, right now, I just think. So.
Madam Chair, my, my understanding about this particular point to you is the genesis is that some people couldn't make all the meetings.
No. The, the, well, there was the genesis, yes. But it was, it was requested that two people be able to share one position, and that request was not, not feasible. And so they, the applicant rearranged schedules so that she could participate fully. So it would be adding a role. Okay. I, I think, I'm, I'm glad that we're taking some time to think about this. Because I know that, you know, these, these particular slots aside, we have still had problems with getting people to attend these meetings. So I think we need to spend some time thinking about how to make this feasible. I mean, maybe, maybe we're looking at a smaller committee and focus groups, or, I, I don't know. But I think we need to brainstorm about how to make this really work. Can I also make, you mentioned, Heidi, that this committee was advisory to the select board. It's actually not, if you read the purpose. And so I think, if that was our intent, then I think that's a different. But this purpose says that it's really advisory to DPW. And yet, we're sitting here collectively kind of holding this bag right now, right? So I think that may be another piece that we need to think about how to make that work. But. Yeah. So all in all, I mean, what this says to me is that we've got a, we're clearly trying to address the problem. We've got some strategies, but they all need a little bit more thought and work. And so I definitely appreciate that we can put this off until our next meeting. And I'll do a little bit of independent percolating on this. Because, you know, this is a really important project, and there are portions of it that have to be done, period. So, you know, if we open the street, as you said, we need to think about how it's going back, because we're not going to redo it in another 10 years. We need to make sure that we're making wise choices and choices that work for most of the community, at the very least. There's going to be expense involved in that, bringing thing, bringing the sidewalks up to ADA compliance, even if they stay the same. So we really want to make sure that we're making good choices.
Yeah. I don't think they can stay the same.
Well.
I mean, I think there's width issues and tree issues.
Right, right. But even if it's the minimum change scenario.
Yes. And isn't it also true that no matter what the summer, that we would go forward with the question of the timing on the lights?
All my grants, yeah.
So that would give us a chance to at least fix that flow, even in the current configuration?
And gather some data.
And gather some data.
But not necessarily provide the whole picture.
Correct.
You know, especially if we're talking about potentially changing lanes.
Yes. Madam Chair, one thing that I would observe, I think, in talking about the, the charge and exactly who's advising whom, this is something that everyone in Needham cares about. I think whatever decisions we make need to be made by politically accountable people. You know, like elected people.
Which is why we're hoping for that.
So they can vote us out if they don't like it. Do you know what I mean? Like, I, I think it's, you know, but I mean, it, to the extent to which it's just advisory to the DPW, or to the extent to which the committee's making binding decisions, I, I guess I'm personally uncomfortable with that, given.
That wasn't the intent.
Yeah, and it all comes up through the select board.
I just mean anyway.
Right. But there was some confusion there. So I just think some clarity about that, to me, is important, you know? I think that this, this is high visibility stuff. This is not the same, maybe, as a project, a road project anywhere else, you know? So it maybe is in a little bit of an odd case.
Yes. I just, I think the role of the director and the Department of Public Works, I mean, you, you wouldn't want it to be something that they were really troubled by, right? So that's why you need both.
Madam Chair, while we take the next few weeks to discuss and, you know, consult with our consultants and with DPW, I think it might also be helpful to ask about a timeline. So, taking Kathy's motion, what would a feasible timeline look like with this revised direction? Because I think people are anxious not knowing when things might change.
And I think one of our missteps is trying to hit a target date without enough time. So I think we need to really slow this way down. So, but yeah, we can talk about that.
And I guess I'm just hoping that should we vote this motion, or at least the part that is getting us out of that grant, that then we're not like pushing towards a date for a pilot anymore, which, you know, was really what the rush was about. Even, even pushing it back, like the feedback that I was getting, even if you say more than six months, people were anxious about, well, then that's just the wintertime, or that's my busy holiday season, or whatever. So if we, if we were to do this, and we don't take the grant, and we don't do the pilot, then we're not forced to make a change at a particular date at all.
And that means we can collate all the information that we've been talking about, and make sure that we have a well-rounded, well-thought-through plan. Okay. So, so what do we need to do? We have a motion on the floor, but we want to kind of table it.
You could, you could have a motion by the majority to table it till June 10th.
It's a move.
Second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Okay. Motion carries. Tabled until June 10th.
And Kathy, will you get your language to Kate?
Yes.
So that it could be considered at least at the next meeting?
Yes.
In addition to everybody's percolating that's going on?
Yes.
Does nobody else percolate? Whatever. Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that. That feels right. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is committee reports. So, Mary Ann, you want to start?
Large House. Large House met last week, I think, if I remember my weeks. And the thing that people should be aware of is that there is a public hearing that's coming out for Large House on June 9th. I'm not looking at the time.
7:00 PM at Powers Hall.
7:00 PM at Powers Hall on June 9th. And really, what we would ask people to think about is, why are you coming to a Large House hearing? What is it that you are concerned about particularly? The committee has looked at houses on non-conforming lots, they've looked at houses on conforming lots, they have some theories, but they would also observe that there are large swaths of Needham that have neighborhoods that have largely been rebuilt. And so there is some question of the efficacy of making further changes and what that means. So I, I think the committee looks forward to hearing from members of the public about what they would hope would happen, and how it might have implications for their particular neighborhoods.
Right. And I'll just jump on that and say, if you're interested in this subject, the time to come out is now. While there will be further public forums, the timeline dictates, and making a recommendation to the planning board no later than like late 2025, November or so. And you want to get your voice in on the early side so that it can be part of the construction of this potential policy.
Correct.
Anything else?
Nope.
Josh?
I was going to say something about Stormwater, but I think Kevin may have more of an update than I do.
No, you have to be fine. It's just, go ahead.
No, I'm actually behind on my emails, I know what you've said.
Okay, sure. All right. I wrote the email. But, all right, I'll jump in. Stormwater is a tough nut to crack, okay? And it's actually, is going through legal review with revisions on that. Originally, we're thinking of presenting to the select board in some capacity in the spring, with a hearing in later spring. But we're running, it's just, we're being careful, and we're doing a due diligence. And so we will be presenting in the summer. We will present, and probably do a hearing in the summer as well. And we're, we're going to assess at tomorrow's meeting about, like, where we're going to land if we can make it to Falltown meeting. Because it's, there's a lot to do. I mean, it's a big, it's a big change. And I think we want to have the community weigh in and chew on it. I mean, if there's any other examples you know of where maybe big things are going through the community and people get upset about them, let me know. But I think that's why we want to be careful with this. So we're gonna be, but we're gonna, we're gonna sort that out tomorrow. Kristi, yes?
Do you, do you really think you can do a public hearing in the summer? Or is that part of what you're going to talk about?
That's a good question, yeah. That's, that's part of it. I mean, you won't keep the momentum going, but I appreciate that there'll be a lot of people who'll be away. So that's.
Or if they're not away, they're not paying attention.
That's true.
Also true.
Good point.
Even more than during, like now.
Right.
I, I would just add that it's very hard on our cycle to give up three months of the year when we only have two legislative sessions. So it's just something we're gonna have to keep wrestling with forever.
Yeah. Okay. In other news, we had community conversations last week. It was, there was a nor'easter, but still the crowd was great. It was very good. It went, it was well-run, and Dr. Gary Bailey presented. And, I mean, he's dropping gems everywhere. He was very good. So maybe we do another one, and we should go to that too, because it was really well-done. Also, Memorial Day was yesterday, the celebrations. It was great to see everyone. Y'all did great. That's all I got.
Kathy?
TCHOC met last Monday. I was actually not there due to my daughter's graduation, but per my update, it was a short, well, it was not a meeting to get an update on the status of the projects, but just to go through expenses and approve them. But just, you know, noting that as we have, Town Meeting has voted more money, both for NHA and also the Charles River Center, you know, that's, TCHOC will be there scrutinizing the expenditures and making sure that they align with what Town Meeting has authorized, and are moving towards a result that is what we want.
Great. Okay. I'm gonna say, the Tree Committee also met last week and talked a lot about, we were supposed to have a visitor from the Wellesley Building Department who was gonna walk us through the, the Wellesley's tree policy. Unfortunately, our guest was not able to join, but we did kind of go through some of the questionnaire that we had sent both to Wellesley and to Newton to talk about that. Those, those folks will be able to join us at a later date for a more in-depth conversation and question and answer. We talked mostly about planning for the public meeting that the Tree Committee is having. That's on June 4th, at 7:00 PM in Powers Hall. This is a big, big couple of weeks of public forums. And you may have seen the flyer that goes, that has gone out with the Tree Committee meeting, the Large House Committee meeting, and the Eversource Electric Distribution Project, which has its in-person meeting on June 5th. So lots and lots of stuff going on. Please make sure that you take a look. The Tree Committee is planning to have breakout discussions about everything tree-related, kind of what the community wants to see from the Tree Committee, and a potential tree bylaw, and other solutions. So we're looking forward to seeing you there. And then just a couple of things. The Memorial Day commemorations, which Kevin mentioned, were fantastic, and just want to say thank you to the town and all of the departments and clubs and everything that makes that extraordinary six-stop commemoration possible. That's every department in the town practically, but certainly the police and fire, the Exchange Club, the Boy Scouts, the clergy of All Stripes who are with us at every stop, students from the high school and St. Sebastian's who sang and played the trumpet notably, and I think are going to get roped into that now every year. So it was really, a really nice way to spend the morning. I would also remind everyone that the RTS summer hours are in effect, so, closes early on Fridays. Don't forget. Because your car will smell really bad if you leave it that way over the weekend. And then lastly, the high school graduation is this Sunday. So looking forward to that, and congratulations in advance to all of the graduates. That's all I have. Anything else? Okay. Then perhaps a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Any discussion, Kevin?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everyone.